Krishna, Hare, Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, 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 Hare, Hare. Hare Krishna and wish you all are happy Nityanand Trayodishi. Hoping that you all visited your local centers and you could connect with Lord Nityananda and you could offer your prayers to Nityananda because he is our Adiguru. So today evening we decided to dedicate our session of Chaitanya Charitamrit, in the glories or on meditation of Lord Nityananda Prabhu. So before we begin the session, here is Nityananda Pranam Mantra which somehow we could not write it on the slide, but I would request you all to recite after me. So seeking the blessings of Lord Nityananda Prabhu and here we begin our session. So today we decided to discuss some verses from Chaitanya Bhagwath, chapter nine, Nityananda's childhood pastimes and his travel to holy places. All glories to Lord Chaitanya, all glories to Lord Nityananda, all glories to Advaita Chandra and all glories to all the devotees of Lord Chaitanya. On the order of Lord Chaitanya, Sri Anantadev had already appeared in Raadhesh and was engaged in various pastimes. So as we know, Nityananda Prabhu, he is actually Anantadev, that is how he serves the supreme lord. So he had, Anantadev has appeared as Nityananda Prabhu on the instructions of Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. And where did he appear? So the place it is described, I hope we remember that it is described in Chaitanya Charitamrit, that Raadhesh is that area where mother Ganga doesn't flow. So that area in Bengal that is known as Raadhesh, so there is that place Ekchakra, where Nityananda Prabhu had already appeared. His father's name was Hadi Oja and his mother was Padmavati. Sri Nityananda Prabhu appeared in the village of Ekchakra as the lord of the godia Vashnavas. So here we see that he has got this surname Oja and earlier it was used by Mithila Brahmanas. Also, we see that he's been addressed here as Gaureshwar. Gaureshwar refers to Nityananda Prabhu here and he destroys the living entities Anrtha or unwanted things. And he awards to the godia, godias are the devotees from Bengal. So the Vashnav from the Bengal are known as godia Vashnav. So he awards these Vashnavas or people who follow this godia Vashnav Sampridaya. So he awards him the service in the pure transcendental rasa of Vatsalya, Sakya and Dasya. From his childhood, Lord Nityananda was sober, intelligent and the abode of all good qualities. His charming loveliness defeated that of millions of cupids. So he's a supreme lord himself, so of course he was sober and intelligent and he was the possessor of all good qualities and that too from his very childhood. And he was like very, very attractive also. The entire district of Raadhesh was filled with auspiciousness and devoid of famine and poverty from the time of his birth. So the supreme lord himself has appeared there in Raadhesh in this Ekchakra village. So everything became auspicious just by his birth. And that is why we see that there was no famine, no poverty, no problems. So Gaurachandra Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, we know that he took birth in Navadweep. So the day that Lord Gaurasundar appeared in Navadweep, in Raadhesh, Lord Nityananda roared loudly. So though he was situated miles apart, but he could sense that his master, his supreme lord has appeared and that is why he was extremely happy and joyful. His roar spread throughout innumerable universes and people of the entire world were practically rendered unconscious. So that was, that was the bliss, that was the ecstasy of Nityananda Ram on the appearance of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. Nityananda remained hidden as he enjoyed childhood pastimes with the other children. So here is a description of lord of childhood pastimes of Nityananda Prabhu and how his main childhood pastime was enacting various pastimes of Supreme Lord Krishna and his various incarnations. The pastimes that the lord enjoyed with his childhood friends were all related to the activities of Lord Krishna. He and his friends formed an assembly of demigods and one of them acting as mother earth offered prayers to them. They then led mother earth to the river bank and the children all began to offer prayers. Then one of the boys, hidden from view loudly declared, "I will soon take birth in Mathura Gokul." So if we read Shrimad Bhagwatham in the 10th canto, the beginning itself, we, we see that how mother earth was disturbed by the atrocities of demons and they all go to pray to Krishna, they all pray, actually they first pray to Vishnu and he requests, they request, all the demigods request Krishna to appear. So it is this pastime that they were enacting and here we see that one of the boy who was hiding and he, on behalf, like he was acting as Vishnu, so he's declaring, "I will soon take birth in Mathura Gokul." One evening, the lord and his friends enacted the marriage of Vasudev and Devaki. So different pastimes, so first we thought that how they prayed to the demigods, sorry, the demigods prayed and Vishnu said that, or Krishna agreed to appear and now they were enacting the marriage of Vasudev and Devaki.
Then late one night, while everyone slept, they made a prison and enacted the birth of Lord Krishna. So it was not just the pastime, it was also the context that they were keeping in mind. So lord appeared in midnight, so rest of the village slept, but these all boys, they were all together and they were enacting and they had a prison and they enacted this birth of Lord Krishna, so even that time they kept it.
And very precisely they were following the pastimes. They created a Gokul and Krishna was taken there and exchanged with Mahamaya, thereby tricking King Kamsa. So see sequentially they are moving and here they are playing that pastime where Krishna was exchanged with Mahamaya.
Another time they dressed someone as Puthna and someone climbed on her chest to suck her breast.
One day, Nityananda and his boyfriends made a shakata or handcart out of reeds and then broke it. So now they were playing the pastimes of Shakatasur. So that is how they were enacting different pastimes. So sometimes they enacted the pastime of how they, they would go and steal things, the butter and other things from the neighboring houses. So all these various pastimes actually they were enacting.
The boys never left Nityananda's association to go home, but continued sporting with him day and night. So this is common, I mean parents, I'm sure they would struggle getting their child back when the, all children are playing in the ground, you know, and the parents will have a tough time getting their child back. Something similarly we can see here that all the boys were so attracted to Lord Nityananda and his association, that none of them wanted to go back home and they continued to play, play with him day and night. But then what these boys were playing were actually in association with the lord and they were enacting the pastimes of the lord, so the, the games and everything was all pure devotional service.
And children, they don't want to come back from playing, like when we would play, we would also not want to come back. What to say if we get an opportunity to play with the lord himself? So much of attraction for the games and more so for Lord Nityananda himself.
And we'll see something more regarding this.
The children's parents did not complain, rather they would affectionately embrace Nityananda. So now here, parents are also not complaining and scolding and shouting that how long would you play and why Nityananda is spoiling all of you. The parents also had such natural attraction and affection for Nityananda.
They said, "We have never seen such transcendental sports. How does this child know so many of Krishna's pastimes?" So this is very fascinating. Usually we have heard these stories and these pastimes and probably we were young and grandmother would tell us or then later we read in Shilpa Ropat books, but here in this case, all these boys and the lord, they were not just, I mean, nobody knew that how they know and they were in fact enacting these pastimes in great detail and in proper context.
In this way, Nityananda and his friends imitated the pastimes of the various incarnations.
One day, Nityananda dressed like Vaman and went to cheat Bali Maharaj out of his kingdom, which covered the three worlds.
Someone played the role of the aged Shukracharya, who forbid Bali from giving the three steps. After accepting the gift, the lord placed his last step on the head of Bali. So all these details, not only about Krishna's pastime, but of all the other incarnations' pastimes, Nityananda along with his friends would enact and the elders would wonder that how this small boy is aware of the depth of information and the details, every single minute detail would be enacted by them.
One day, the lord enacted the pastime of killing Indrajit, the son of Ravan. And one day, in the mood of Lakshman, he accepted defeat.
Someone in the role of Vibhishan was brought before Ramachandra and Rama performed his Abhishek or coronation installing him as the king of Lanka.
One boy said, "I am the mighty Ravan, now I am releasing the Shaktisheela weapon, stop it, if you can Lakshman." So like this, one boy is challenging Nityananda.
So that boy who was acting as Ravan, he actually threw what? Padmapushpa, a lotus flower. So instead of that bhaan, he was actually throwing this padmapushpa or lotus flower and Nityananda who was acting as Lakshman, he was enacting Lakshman's pastime. So this is that pastime where actually Lakshman becomes unconscious, murchit ho jatein bhagwan and then he falls down. So in the mood of Lakshman, Nityananda fell down just by getting hit by that lotus flower.
After the lord, in the mood of Lakshman, fell unconscious, all the boys tried in vain to revive him. So now Nityananda is lying on the ground, unconscious, all the boys are trying to revive him, but he's not reviving, so everybody is very tense now.
When they found no symptoms of life remained in the body of Nityananda, they all held their heads and began to cry. So the kids, they did not understand what has happened suddenly to Nityananda. I mean, just with one flower, he is hit and he is unconscious and we thought that we are playing, but Nityananda is not coming back to life, so what's wrong with him, what to do?
And no symptoms of life, which means it seems apparent he is not breathing and the, the breath is not going and... The lord's father and mother, Hadi Pandit and Padmavati came running there and also observed that there was no sign of life in their son. So what scene they were seeing?
They then also fell to the ground unconscious. Everyone who saw this tragedy was stuck with wonder. So now it was a moment of great anxiety and they were all so perplexed seeing the condition of Nityananda and they were all wondering like what can be done, what has happened suddenly to Nityananda?
And the parents, the parents have...
And the parents, yeah.
Parents have also become unconscious, have fallen down and the whole family is lying on the ground. As the boys described the entire incident, someone said, "I understand why he is unconscious."
Previously, one great actor played the role of Dashrat and when he heard that Rama had left for the forest, he left his body. So somebody was narrating this, that this is the real thing which has happened. So while acting, in just in the drama, somebody was playing the role of Dashrat and he got so much into the character that when this character of Dashrat heard Rama has left, so he actually left his body.
Someone else said, "There is a boy dressed as Hanuman, if he gives him medicine, he will be cured."
Before the incident, the lord had instructed his friends, "When I fall unconscious, you should all gather around me and cry." So the lord had already dictated what they have to do.
After a while, send Hanuman for some medicine and I will recover when he puts the medicine to my nose. So Nityananda had given this instruction to his friends that I will become unconscious, you come here, surround me and cry and after some time you send Hanuman for some medicine and then when he brings the medicine, medicine puts on my nose, I will revive, I will recover.
Actually, he is a perfect director that way. He has scripted the whole thing, he's a script writer and he has directed the team also as how they are supposed to behave. But when the boys heard the people's comments, they remembered Nityananda's instructions and the boy dressed as Hanuman immediately went for the medicine.
Another boy playing the role of a doctor remembered Lord Ram, Sri Ram and he held the medicine to Lakshman's nose.
At that very moment, Lord Nityananda regained his consciousness upon which his parents and others, they're all smiled in relief.
Hadi Pandit embraced his son and all the boys became overjoyed.
So everyone asked him, "Bapa iha, kothai shikhaila?", "From where have you learned all these things, who has taught you?" And what is Prabhu replying? He say, "Mora es sakala leela, these are all my pastimes." So Nityananda is replying, "Who will teach me? These are my pastimes only, I was that Lakshman at that time and I am the same Lakshman, so I know what has, what happened and how Lakshman gained his consciousness." So he's telling the fact, but then everybody is like in a light-hearted way and everybody is laughing at that.
In his early childhood, the lord was most attractive, no one wanted to let him go from their laps.
Everyone had more affection for Nityananda than they had for their own sons, but no one could recognize him due to the influence of Lord Vishnu's illusory energy. So just like when we read Krishna Leela and there is this description that how all the members of Gokul, all the Brajvasis, they had more affection for Krishna than their own children. So here also we see that everybody was attached to Nityananda much more than they were attached to their own children.
In this way, from the beginning of his childhood, Nityananda had no happiness other than enjoying the pastimes of Lord Krishna.
Lord Nityananda remained at home like this for 12 years. Thereafter, he left for visiting the holy places. So I hope we all remember that we discussed during our session in Chaitanya Charitamrit, that when Nityananda was 12 years old, a sanyasi visited Ekchakra and Hadi, Hadi Pandit and Padmavati, they very nicely welcomed this sanyasi and they fed him sumptuously and they served him very, very nicely. And while he was leaving, so because Hadi Pandit was very pleased, I mean, he was very happy to see this sanyasi and he wanted to extend some more service to him. So then Hadi Pandit actually goes and asks this sanyasi that I would like to gift you something, so is there anything which I can give, gift you, which I can give you? And this sanyasi said that, "Well, I have to travel to many places and it will be wonderful if somebody travels along with me and your son, your son Nityananda, he is so wonderful, I would like to take him along with him, along with me." Hearing this, Hadi Pandit was completely bewildered. He did not know what to do and what not to do, what is right and what is wrong. And then he remembered, so he recalled in these scriptures, he recalled Ramayan and he recalled that episode when Vishwa Mitra asked for Ramachandra to King Dashrat and Dashrat was very perplexed, but then because he had given his words, so he had sent Lord Rama along with him. So remembering that, Hadi Pandit approached his wife Padmavati and he asked Padmavati that, "What is your opinion?" And she said, "My lord, whatever you think is appropriate, I will go by it." So both husband and wife, what to say of husband and wife? We are, we are talking about how the entire village was so attached to Nityananda. So we can, we can actually estimate the amount of attachment his own parents would have. And yet, because they had given their words and because they wanted to please this wonderful Vashnav sanyasi, so they said, "Okay, let it be if this is what you desire." So the sanyasi takes Nityananda and he starts traveling with him. And no sooner the sanyasi, like he just had left and this news spread like wildfire in the village and all the villagers gathered together and they discussed, they asked Hadi Pandit that what has happened and he described this whole incident in detail and when he, when they heard, each one of them, they said that, "Let us run and catch hold of this sanyasi" and everybody was eager to give his own son in exchange, that let him take my son, let him take my son, but just return our Nityananda. So with that desire, they started searching for the sanyasi, but then sanyasi had already left. So this is what has happened, where it is mentioned here that at the age of 12, he actually, Nityananda actually leaves for visiting the holy places. So along with that sanyasis, he is on a tirkyatra. So I think almost for 20 years, Nityananda Prabhu would be traveling different places from north to south, from east to west, he covered the entire India. So I think almost for twenty years, Nityananda Prabhu would be traveling different places from north to south, from east to west, he covered the entire India.
He traveled to the holy places for next twenty years and then finally joined the association of Lord Chaitanya.
The Lord first went to Vakreshwar, then he went alone to Vedyanath.
He went to Gaya and then to Lord Shiva's abode Kashi, where the Ganges flows towards the north.
Seeing the Ganges, Lord Nityananda was greatly pleased. He took bath and drank some water, yet his grief was not mitigated.
In the month of March, January and February, the Lord took an early morning bath at Praag. Praag is where the three rivers meet, Gangga, Yamuna and Saraswati. Then he went to Mathura, his former birthplace.
The Lord spotted in the waters of the, sported in the waters of the Yamuna at Vishramghat. And thereafter went with great interest to see Govardhan. So it is described there that Lord spent lots of time in Vrindavan and his favorite places were Vishramghat and Ramghat. So these two places he would visit quite often and he would sport in Yamuna and he were, he would like be around Govardhan. So that is how, as it was mentioned, Puruvajanmasthana. So he is in the place where he had taken the last birth.
And he'll remain here in Vrindavan till that time. Uh Lord Chaitanya manifests his uh pastimes of preaching. The Lord visited each of the twelve forests, visiting, beginning with Vrindavan.
So Lord actually visited Vrindavan and then it is described that he goes to various other places, he goes to Gokul, Hastinapur, Siddhapur, Shiva Kanchi, Vishnu Kanchi, Kurukshetra, Prabhas, Pratishtrotha, Ayodhya, Guhaka, Sariyu, Gomati, Mahindra Mountains, Haridwar, like he goes to Badrikashram. And he also goes to Madurai, he goes to Shivashila, Tamrapani. So all these various places he visits. So like as I was saying, from east to west, from north to south, all the holy places he visits and then he come back again to Vrindavan.
After visiting various holy places in this way, Lord Nityananda returned again to Mathura. He continually stayed in Vrindavan and became so absorbed in Krishna that he did not know whether it was day or night.
He did not eat, but he occasionally drank some milk whenever someone offered it to him. Lord Nityananda knew well that Lord Gaurachandra was living incognito in Navadweep. He thought to himself. So he was aware that Gaurachandra has appeared in Navadweep. But Lord is still an incognito. Incognito means he was not yet manifesting his pastime, the sankirtan lila has not yet started. He was not revealing the purpose and he has not yet started actively his mission. So Nityananda was aware and then he thought to himself.
I will go serve Lord Gauranga when he manifests his opulence. Thinking in this way, Lord Nityananda did not go to Navadweep, but remained at Mathura.
He regularly enjoyed sporting in the waters of the Yamuna and playing with the children in Vrindavan. So Mahap- uh so Nityananda Ram was remembering his previous days as Balaram here in Vrindavan. So like at that time, he would play with his Gwalbal. So even now, he was playing with children in Vrindavan and sporting in Yamuna. Although Lord Nityananda is omnipotent, he did not distribute devotional service to the Lord at that time. When Lord Gaurachandra manifests his opulence, then on his order, he would begin to distribute devotional service. The servants and associates of Lord Chaitanya did not like to do anything without his instruction. But this does not diminish their glories in the least. So though he was, he was a constant companion, he was, he is the first expansion, he is always there with Krishna. Yet Balaram in his form as Nityananda, he was waiting for the direct instruction from his master. So actually, the devotee's life is all revolving around the instructions of his seniors. So Nityananda Prabhu is demonstrating that, that though he knew, I mean, of course, he could have started sankirtan movement now itself, he could have started asking people to chant now itself, but then he did not do anything, he was patiently waiting that when Mahaprabhu would begin and when he would instruct, and then I will start.
Lord Nityananda is the foremost devotee of Lord Chaitanya. For the glories of Lord Chaitanya always reside on his tongue. So this is uh, this is how we can understand this. If we are really wanting to become devotees, then our tongue should vibrate, nothing else but the glories of the Lord. And here we can see that the reason being quoted is that he is the Lord's foremost devotee because there is nothing else which is coming out of his lotus mouth other than the glories of Lord Chaitanya.
Day and night, Lord Nityananda chants the glories of Lord Chaitanya. So when one worships Nityananda, he certainly attains devotion for Lord Chaitanya. So this is what his constant meditation is, he is constantly thinking and glorifying Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. So automatically, anyone who worships Nityananda, he acquires the devotion to Lord Chaitanya also.
All glories to Lord Nityananda, who is the first manifestation of Lord Chaitanya. The glories of Lord Chaitanya become manifest by his mercy.
One becomes attached to Nityananda by the mercy of Sri Chaitanya and one who knows Nityananda never faces any adversities. So these la- last few verses of this session is basically talking about Nityananda Tatva. That what is the significance of Nityananda Prabhu, what is his importance? So imagine this verse, he says, one who knows Nityananda never faces any adversities. So it is so very amazing, if we are worshiping Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, then automatically we become attached to Nityananda Prabhu. And when one becomes attached to Nityananda Prabhu, such a person never faces any adversities. If we read Chaitanya Chirtamritth, there are so many examples. The immediate example which comes to my mind is Ragunada's Goswami, that how he wanted to leave his family connections and come back and stay with Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. And every time he would make an attempt and his father would catch him and he was uh married to a very beautiful wife so that he stays back, he was chained so that he could stay back. And finally, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu said, okay, you be there with, with your family members and satisfy them and the right time will come when you can actually escape. And he was wondering, when is that right time? So the right time was created when Chaitanya Mahaprabhu visited his place and when Chaitanya Mahaprabhu asked him as a punishment to organize the feast for all his devotees. And that is what we meditate upon on the Pani Hathi festivals, that is how he organizes that Pani Hathi festival. And he gets, or he becomes the recipient of the mercy of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. And when he receives that mercy of, sorry, mercy of Nityananda Prabhu. And when he receives that mercy of Nityananda Prabhu and then when he leaves his house and there was no objection. And then he could actually serve Chaitanya Mahaprabhu for the rest of his life. So Ragunada's Goswami is one example. The other example we see of Nityananda's mercy is Jagai and Madhai. So it is mentioned that there is nobody, there was nobody as wicked as Jagai and Madhai in that area. And because Chaitanya Mahaprabhu had given instruction to Nityananda Prabhu to go door to door and preach everybody to chant Krishna's name. And Nityananda thought that if these two sinful fallen Brahmanas, if I can change their heart, then it will be very easy for me to convert everyone. And he goes and he requests, so there is this long pastime where we actually get to know that how Nityananda Prabhu again and again goes and tries to convince them. And one day, when, when he actually goes along with Haridas Thakur, Jagai and Madhai, they chase him. And they, I mean, so badly that Nityananda and Haridas, they start running from there. And they were talking to each other that we are actually running from our death. And if somehow we can survive and somehow we can run away from this, these two people because if they catch us, they will definitely kill us. And Haridas gets very disturbed and he says, what type of a person Chaitanya Mahaprabhu has asked me to tie along with? Everywhere I have to go along with this avadhuta. And he catches just anybody and he is eager to give uh Krishna's name and all, without caring for his life and without caring for my life. So he is such a mad person along with, I, I have to go and preach others. And Nityananda replies, I am not mad person. Mad is that master who has given us the instruction that go to every house. Uh that instruction is given, so we have to go to each and every house. So it's not my mistake, it's the mistake of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. So like that, they were having this interaction. But the point is that even, even after being chased by Jagai and Madhai, few days later, again Nityananda Prabhu reaches them. And then finally, they get converted, I mean, one of them attacks Nityananda Prabhu and then Chaitanya Mahaprabhu comes there, he takes out his sudarshan, he is ready to kill these two of them. And Nityananda pleads them and Nityananda forgives them and that's how Jagai and Madhai became very dear devotees of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. So one who knows Nityananda never faces any adversities.
Those who wish to cross the ocean of material existence and drown in the ocean of devotional service must worship Lord Nityananda. So there are two oceans, one we have to cross and the other one we have to drown. So what you have to cross the ocean is the material existence, the ocean of birth, old age, disease and death. So that ocean we have to cross, in that we don't have to drown. But then there is the ocean of devotion as well, the infinite ocean of bliss of devotional service. In that ocean, we are, we are to drown. If we are wishing these two things, then we must worship Lord Nityananda. Someone said, Nityananda is just like Balaram. Another person said, he is most dear to Sri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, Chaitanyaera bada priyadham.
Anyone who follows Nityananda without finding fault in him will surely attain the shelter of Sri Gaurachandra.
When will that day come, when I will see Lord Chaitanya and Lord Nityananda surrounded by their devotees?
So actually, that should be our meditation also. I mean, we are reading Chaitanya Chirtamritth and we are hearing so much about Chaitanya and Nityananda and so many wonderful, amazing devotees. So when will that day come? Will that day ever come? Is there some hope? I mean, otherwise, ours is a hopeless case, but Shilpa Prabhupada's mercy. We are hoping that someday we can actually participate.
Let me serve Lord Gaurachandra under the instruction of Lord Nityananda, who is my worshipable lord in all respects. So I want to serve Lord Gaurachandra, how? By the, following the instructions of Lord Nityananda.
Accepting Sri Chaitanya and Nityananda Prabhu as my life and soul, I, Vrindavan Das, sing the glories of their lotus feet. So as we know, Chaitanya Bhagwat is compiled by Vrindavan Das Thakur. And in Vrindavan Das Thakur's glories, we have read that he is the vedvayas of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu's pastimes. So this section, what we have read is from Chaitanya Bhagwat. And here we see that Vrindavan Das Thakur is praying and accepting Sri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu and Nityananda Prabhu as his life and soul. So requesting all of you to send your prayers, to write your prayer, today is Nityananda Trayodishi. So what are we praying for? Write your prayer, leave it in the comment section and let's hope and pray that Lord Nityananda hears our prayers. Thank you very much for joining. Hare Krishna.